Well, the only way we thought, we heard it was gonna rain today.
Yeah.
I don't want Vanessa to get fired from her husband, so. It'd be easier to do this in a bit longer than I think it last thing.
Well, like I said, we gotta pass a policy on.
Oh, true, we might have to throw one in there.
We'll have to like, we'll have to see what's required and then we'll have to get those written.
Yeah, I know she did say at the school board, so it's a day we're gonna start. Getting, getting one written up right away or whatever after they visit with them. Alright, yeah, you guys be sitting here, but yeah, we're just gonna take a five minute break.
Okay.
You guys can do. Do you guys each want one?
Do I?
I'll give it to you here. There's a copy of the agenda and also all the policies. Oops. In case we need them not to have to do all of them. Oh, you got it, okay. Oh, yeah, no, go ahead, yeah, we were just having a little, little break in between here, but you go right ahead. We can get started. Does she have it on me or? Fabi?
I'm not ready anyway.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm not ready for this meeting, period, honestly. So where's that?
There was one, I see the I A D, you had it on here.
I A D?
Yeah, the first one, the first time it's listed on here. It's actually, uh.
I A D and I A D.
It's called disposal of school estate. D is a job, yeah.
I A D and I A D, I got the name on.
The I A D, I gotta get to it here. Yeah, it's called, yeah, disposal of school real estate.
It's there.
Yeah, mhm, yeah.
There's just an extra one with the.
Right, but it's also titled wrong up here, so I don't know which one you wanna. It's in two spots, the one, the second one is titled right, the first one isn't, so yeah, there's an extra one, so whatever.
There's I A D and I A D.
We'll just throw out that extra line of the I A D with the wrong thing on there, whatever, it's fine. And I think I put, your guys is in or, I think, for that.
It looks like it, yes.
Yeah, I thought it, 'cause that's how I made my copy, so. Yeah, no, you go ahead, you put them in order first, and I had done mine, so, sorry about that.
Oh, no. Replace from Nino.
James got one.
I got at least two.
Did you get it though, I mean?
I got at least two.
Oh, cool, good for you. I, uh, I was going to start with. I know one year that's. We have that, I think, in here one time before. And it was in the grains or whatever. With a little column or something, it's a little. These are pretty much alphabetical. I should've just given you the copies I made, they were in the recorder. See, you should've took mine. I wasn't gonna do a copy, 'cause I thought she might have notes on her, so I wasn't gonna do that, so.
Why is this so difficult? I've been on it all, but that is.
Yeah, it takes one to fill it out sometimes.
What's in the room next to it, then?
Yeah.
Hey, switch one too, right? I'm doing all the colors A C L.
Vanessa, Vanessa, do you wanna just take this, this is?
I used to really like him before I was in the box. Number one seed ever, like, uh, you know, people who just like.
I do have extra copies, but I think she probably like maybe probably, I can, oh, when I was looking at it, maybe notes on it. And I know you use them too, so. Yeah, there's two with a one. Okay, so it is nine forty-five, we will. All the meetings are ordered and we'll kinda start from top on down, so B A B R two. The, uh, this one was a cognia recommended one too, I see, um, or cognia regulation, I guess, I should say, or whatever. I think the both of the first two are, so anyway, I thought if it's coming from them also. We kinda have to, I mean, we've had it before and things or whatever, so I guess I would, I, I feel like, I guess, we kinda. Have to follow it if that's what cognia's recommending, 'cause they're the ones that come and accreditate our schools, so. I don't know which, did you have anything that you think that you wanted to?
I, as I said, last night when I was reading over these, I had a fling headache and. I, I need to digest them better, but I guess for now.
True, and it would just be a first reading.
No, this is one.
Well, that's true, that's, this is a one because these are.
Take one reading in there.
That's true, these are just, the first two are just board regulations.
But I guess I could reread it and bring it to the board meeting if I, or let you know, I guess, if I have.
Yeah, 'cause we got a couple weeks for that or whatever, so, okay, so that one, well, just for now, we'll go ahead and pass through. To the board for first reading, okay, um, how about B A B R one?
I do have some problems with this because I have some problems with the board policies that they address. Again, there's a lot here. Um, and, and I, I will say, one of my concerns with trying to do all these policies, there's so many and there's. I know some, a lot of them are short, but there's a lot in here. And I don't think our, most of our board is gonna have time to read all this. And so I definitely have current concerns on that, um.
Well, there's supposed to be, and don't spence or, he, I know last time said something about he had read through, I mean, they should. Even though I know they're more than happy that you and I do this, but still.
I know they're supposed to be, but I'm aware that they do.
Well, I.
So the only change in B A B R one from what you had already passed is number four on page. So the board, the previous board passed this, and on page, what is it, three?
Right.
There is a highlighted yellow addition that states if a policy or regulation is in a piddly substantially violated. This request that the board publicly censure an errant board member through a two-thirds majority vote. That is the only thing that is added to the policy that's already in place.
Where'd that come from?
Came from the School Board Association, it's to comply with law stating that you can't censure them without a two-thirds majority vote.
And this one also.
Does not need a simple majority, it needs a two-thirds majority.
And this one also was a cognia regulation.
Yes, so that is the only change in policy.
And I, and I think that should be better, I think it's, it's better to be two-thirds than to just be a simple majority.
You gotta have, so, it's gotta be two-thirds.
Yeah, whatever, I guess, again, I honestly, I, I'm having such a hard time with this because I don't know why we're doing them right now. I think this should be gone over with a new superintendent, but, uh, yeah, I guess.
Okay.
I guess I just felt like we're trying to get as many as we can done so that it isn't so much for the, 'cause there's already gonna be a whole bunch of new ones that are gonna come out now from.
Yeah.
Legislature that we're gonna, we're gonna, as far as we are now, we're gonna end up going, you know, a whole bunch more again that's gonna be changing them and things or whatever, 'cause I know. She's been talking about how much they're working on all of the new ones, so I really also don't wanna bomb her. But, and, and I guess the reason why I feel like these are even, to keep them as is, is 'cause they're also cognit too, not just school board, I mean, they're coming. From them, so, but that's just my thoughts, but.
So the only, so what I guess I'm asking is, this is the only change to the policy you already passed, are we okay with the change that they added? I mean, it would be, it's, it, all it does is make sure that, that for someone to be censured, that it needs to be a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, and I, and I, I like that, I mean, it shouldn't be just a simple majority.
Yeah, that's fine, that's a change.
Yeah. And this makes sure when we give copies to the board members before the meeting, you know, that they get the colored version so that they do see what's highlighted and things or whatever, so. Alright, then let's, was there anything else that you wanted, or just you need those regulations as is since we've got it, or? Any other changes that you seen that you wanted, Vanessa?
No, not specifically right here.
Okay, alright, so let's do G D A A early graduation.
And again, this is the reason that we met, uh, because we were talking about cybersecurity requirements and how they affect policy. So this is the policy that, um, that they have, and it affects early graduation. So the handbook regulates the graduation requirements, so you can, when Kelly brings the handbook. You can review his graduation requirements in there, but as far as this committee goes. This is the one that, you know, regu- that regulates graduation, 'cause early graduation is not regulated by the handbook.
Right, yeah, this has been around since two thousand nine.
Don't we have a policy that has graduation requirements?
No, those are, um, those run through the handbook now, and they're totally rescinded altogether. Yeah.
We'd have to look and see, 'cause that would be a separate one, anyway, this one's just early.
It's all read it out, I mean, I can give you the all read it out policy from the School Board Association, but it's, it's in your handbook.
Isn't that restricted to be replaced? I didn't very mind.
No, it's, it's.
Might be a different letter than this one, right, though, maybe, huh?
It's considered an administrative regulation, and so if you want it, but he's already got that in his handbook, so if you look.
Oh, yeah, G D A, it doesn't hear, she has done, we send it, it says covered in law, she said we were supposed to remove G D A, so. So that one is rescinded completely.
I thought we could have, I don't understand that, because I thought we could have above and beyond policies.
Right, so I suppose if we would wanna do one, we, we could, you know, or put it in the handbook or whatever, but she just, this is just like on here where it said, you know, remove.
I'm just passing the ones that complete your handbook. That would be something, if you wanted to cover that and go above the law within your superintendent, you're welcome to do it.
Right. As long as we have it one place or another, right, I mean, 'cause I know he also talked to you a little bit about last time, that one that's changing something with the, um. It's a wording after we passed the first reading, um. Do credit classes or something, wasn't it, about?
Right.
The grade, whatever, or something, but that, that was, that one we'll bring back, we'll have to talk about it at the second meeting or whatever, things. He told you after we had already passed the first reading.
Yep.
So, I know I pulled it out then too, after you said it that night, but that's a totally different one, so. Anyway, um. I don't know, as far as early graduation, I guess with this one, I don't think I had any problems with it, I, I understand that it might be very sad, but I guess it is good to have. Have them at least let us know.
There's no changes on this based on what, on adding cybersecurity, because this just says. All the requirements for your graduates, so.
Right, yeah, and I did see that this was one that they, she had done, that this one was okay that we have before, so if we did just wanna renew it, then it was. You know, it was okay to renew, I see that's how it was marked.
There's no changes to it.
Right, and it's good to have that wording, 'cause that way you don't have to change it every, you know, if you put in a specifically what the state requires all the time, yeah, so this way it's nice to say that it complies with it, so. I was okay, if, if you're okay.
I think so.
Alright, H A A. That one also has been around since two thousand ten. That was another one that was, they had done, that we were okay with what we have.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, again, I don't see any issues with that, but.
Yeah, 'cause it does talk about, you know, how it comes to us and maybe something different, time or whatever, so.
So, and this is where we talk and wait on the revenue projections, because it says you create your budget based on revenue projections, uh.
Right, and we usually always have been a little.
Expense projections.
Once we know. So, okay, if we don't have any questions with that one, then we know. H B C B, Public Schools Foundation. That was another one, I see that they had known that this one that we have is okay, so. Unless there's something we didn't see anything.
Yeah, the only thing that I saw there was something, um, maybe it wasn't this one.
Yeah, it's foundation.
No, I don't, do we have a foundation?
It's the Booster Clubs and the P T Cs and those type of things.
Right, and actually our Booster Club now is, oh, yeah, 'cause.
We encourage operational independence of the foundations and its representatives while still anticipating working relationship between the district and the foundations. It's guided in the common mission of providing high quality education.
Right, that's why we know that they're always trying to be the highest standards for students. I'll write that one down, um, H B, H B D A. Funding proposals, grants, and special projects. That was another one that they said that this one was okay as written, unless you see. I'm okay, I mean, we've been doing that. Things or whatever, so grateful that we've got. Whether it's you or whatever, or some different teachers or whatever, or something that we are, that are willing to look for different funding proposals or grants, so.
We do need to do something different so that we won't have the issues we had this year, though.
Right, I think we need to, what I was thinking is that when they have like their back to school. Like those last two days, that's before school starts or whatever, there, that maybe we, this one should be read and or noted or something again, 'cause a lot of them. Forgot, you know, that it is around or whatever, or something that, to do that, so.
If not, just, I mean.
To let them know that, just, just to make sure that everybody knows to come and ask first, and that way the board has knowledge and. Maybe has some input, that they need some as to how they're writing it, or.
Okay, but does it?
Yeah, no, 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 go ahead.
Okay, so it does say that, that they need to be approved by the board, but. I mean, my, my issue is when they present to the board and we don't approve it. And then it comes back to bite them, I mean, that's not them, that was on us.
Right, but I think if we're talking about that one, it's like they presented in December and it was applied for in October. I didn't know that until you got the copy of the grant, it was actually sent and applied for in October.
For, for what?
October, October before.
Right, October, Maker's Space.
October's before.
Yeah, well, they had applied for it in October of that year of twenty-three, and I think, from what I can see, the only time it was on our agenda was in December of twenty-three. When they convinced that it, that they had gotten it, you know, so, I mean, which wonderful, it's a wonderful thing. So, yeah, I just think maybe if we just really remind everybody, for, you know, for anything, it's like, you know, just come and present and let's ask, so that way, that way, it just makes sure we're all on the same page. We know that it's going on out there, and then we can also, like I said, make sure that how they're feeling it out financially, or. I guess what we would like to comply with or whatever, so we'll just kinda have to make that one a little, just kinda bring it to the forefront, again, some of them probably have forgot about it, or maybe have been new. I guess, or whatever, so. Okay, now this one, H C A E, I see there's some.
This is in the dot one, and so this, this, uh. If you can see, if you look at the colored version, it was very short and it became longer. Um, it puts regulations on how the business manager is able to disperse monies. And it also gives the superintendent the power to, uh, give out a credit card. So for example, Brett Doctor came up the other day, who was going to some sort of football thing, he was trying to get in here. And Zane was not here, so I gave him my credit card. Um, so that he could, I mean, it doesn't matter who. It's all the school's money anyway, so I just gave him my credit card so he could be able to go and do that. Uh, that's what that means there, I'm authorized to give him a credit card and allow him to go on his trip, and Zane didn't have to do that. Um, again, it says here, and this is sometimes a struggle for some of our staff. Uh, you must, should be given to the board with receipts attached, meaning we need to have receipts for people who spend money on their credit card. Isn't that, wouldn't that be great if everybody followed that thing?
They'd follow it.
Instead of.
Yeah, yeah.
He has to go run it down.
So, those changes, obviously, and then you've got, you know, petty cash, the board authorized the business manager to establish petty cash fund not to exceed, like.
Right, we could.
We don't have a minimum on that or a maximum on that, you, you can take that out, or you can add it in, whatever you want.
It doesn't get used very much, does it, anyway? Petty cash, I, I don't think so, I mean, it's.
I think maybe.
You pretty much write checks for everything, don't you, I mean, like.
I think I've had to use it like multiple times.
But, so, I mean, to me, that's not a problem, that, that petty cash access, but. You know, it might be a problem with the future business manager and you wanna have that regulation.
We wanna do a dollar amount or whatever, I mean, it's, I'm okay, whatever.
Yeah, I don't, you guys do it everyone, but I don't know.
So far you did.
Whatever we have in there, we have, that's extra, plus it's fairly refused, I'm not sure why there would need to be a certain dollar amount.
So the, the petty cash is only accessed by, obviously, the business manager right now, the assistant business manager. And I have never accessed it, and I don't know if I necessarily need to go back and dig for the petty cash.
Yeah, no, I think it's good to leave it just in the.
Business manager, assistant business manager.
Two of them, so.
Um, a complete account of the petty cash fund shall be provided to, we, provided to. The, I would say, finance committee, maybe?
Yeah, because if he, I hate to say monthly, 'cause if he's only used it once this year.
I'd say, I'd say yearly, 'cause it's not used very much.
Yeah, I can count it, it's not that much.
Yeah, no, because there never really has, I mean, she's never really using it.
And then, and then it makes sure that the business manager signs this before each year, so he's aware of this agreement.
I'd be okay to, can. I'm okay for now not putting a dollar mode, I don't know, do, are you, do you wanna put a dollar mode in there, Vanessa?
I mean.
I like the first part up here, I do think we should add that. Because it does happen sometimes now too, with, like I said, you had to give your credit card out, I'm, I'm definitely okay with having receipts attached, definitely that. You, we can, we can put one, so it doesn't, helps for future or not, or, I mean, we've just been lucky all these years, like I said, there's hardly anything. I don't, assuming, I just mean, there wasn't much of anything back there.
Are we talking like a hundred dollars?
Yeah, we're talking, we're not talking thousands, we're just talking.
I mean.
I don't know exactly.
If, if we say now to exceed a hundred dollars, is that giving a big enough?
Um, I wanna say that there's more than a hundred, but.
No, but she means like the limit that you would be able to use without having to.
Oh.
I think that'd be plenty high, I think.
Well, here's the thing, so where, where petty cash.
Yeah.
Where petty cash is coming into play, you'll have people who donate to the petty cash fund to cover school lunch debt. So they'll come in and they'll bring five hundred dollars in to cover school lunch debt, however we need to do it. And, or a thousand, or whatever they wanna do, and so, but then you immediately, it's, it's like a pass through.
Right, and I think that actually is even kept separate.
We have that separated.
We have petty cash.
That's separated, but.
Yeah, and maybe didn't realize that, but they actually do have a separate.
And I've never used that, so.
Yeah, we haven't.
To me, that's running, to me, that's running through that petty cash fund.
Right, I know what you mean, 'cause they don't really have a fund, but I know that is, yeah.
And this is, that is the petty cash fund, and so if we start. Yeah, they may keep, in their mind, they keep two separate categories, they keep the petty cash and then they keep the money that's coming in to cover lunch debt separate.
Yeah, it has, yeah.
But it, it's, it's all sitting there in a cash pot, that is petty cash.
True, true, I know it's been technically.
So, as far as bookkeeping goes, that is petty cash, so I wouldn't recommend that.
Yeah, no, I, I.
You're running back and forth.
'Cause I think if it's more than a hundred dollars, then I think it's something that would need to have a receipt and a payment or whatever, I mean, I don't think you've ever.
You're never gonna pay somebody with that.
Yeah, right, that's what I mean, so I'm okay if we wanna do a hundred dollars. Okay. Okay, how about, okay.
Can I ask you what the number five means in the middle, you guys want, like, you guys don't get receipts with the bills, so what, what do we do in there? Is that something you want?
At request, we can add with receipts at request, 'cause we request them all the time. Like, Vanessa will request them with receipts.
True, because otherwise every single, on that listing that you give us each month for the paid bills, you'd have to attach, which we don't want, need that flying around, we'll get lost, or. But, yeah, we could put, yeah.
At request, I put on there.
So that way they can, anybody can see the attached bill, but, yeah, otherwise other meetings.
So it should be, should say with receipts at request.
Yeah, that's what I put in.
Attached at request, yeah.
Not attached though, with receipts at request.
Oh, I see.
That's what I put on there.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
With receipts at request.
Yeah, I'll cross that off, yeah, you're right. Okay, so down here then, you're gonna catch this for. Should be limited to.
Business manager, business manager assistant.
Well, it just says, to me, it's list. It already says that the business manager established that. I didn't know what it meant.
Which, what are you looking at?
Uh, right after we put the hundred dollars in there. The next thing where it says list titles. Would, so are you talking about?
I think it should just be the business manager.
Yeah, because it's underneath that section, so. That you would only be the one that have access to.
A complete account petty cash shall be provided to the board, or, or finance, to the finance committee, board, board finance.
Or, like you said, or do we just wanna say the board wants to hear, I mean.
Well, we can say yearly, but who are we providing to yearly? Board of finance?
What do you think? I mean, like I said, it was used at once, so this is yearly, so nothing, just need to decide.
I mean, so for finance, well, it doesn't say it has to be approved.
No.
Maybe you do like every six months.
That's, I was like that, I was thinking.
Maybe a year might be a little too long, but you don't need to do a month, I mean, since last.
Or quarterly or.
Since I, quarterly's fine, cause since last July, I only, I took like five bucks out of their allowance to do a small transaction. Or not even a transaction, but.
I think it was one time when.
We, we needed to get them starting cash, I think it was, and we used, I don't remember the exact scenario, but it was like a few dollars. That might've been the only time, it's either one or two for a few dollars, so I think monthly is, is probably too fast, but yearly might be too long, so.
You wanna do semi-annually or you wanna do?
What, every six months?
Six months is better than a year, yeah.
Six months?
Would you prefer quarterly, prefer six?
No, no, e- either one is fine to me, I, I don't care whether it's six months or quarterly, it doesn't make a difference to me, so whatever you guys want to, but six months is fine.
Cause I know I don't think yearly ever did anything.
Well, just do bi- bi-yearly's fine.
Semi-annually.
Or semi, sorry.
Whether you wanna say semi-annually or every six months or however you wanna word it.
Yeah, that's fine, that's, that's better, just in case something happens. Maybe use it, but.
But like I said, now there's a limit down to if it's something the board or not, so.
Last time I used it, it was like a few dollars.
So who do we want it to, to, are we doing it to the board or are we doing it to board finance?
I put it to board finance.
Okay, I, I'm okay with whatever, I just wanna change my copy as well.
To me, that's something that can be handled.
Well, and that can be changed too, if it gets, if it starts looking like it's being done on a regular basis, and it needs to have the board, then we can change it.
Okay, all right, there we go, so we'll do board finance.
Yeah, but that, that's a good running place, cause it doesn't get used currently, so.
And what was the other change? Oh. The back, the board manager shall read and agree to this policy as a condition of employment. Okay, did you read it?
Yeah, I read it.
And I'm okay with leaving that in there, that they need to know that, that, yeah, that every six months, then that's.
So this is something that we'll have to get some sort of written agreement together that acknowledges it.
Right, yeah, yeah. You two can come up with something as to what, how you wanted to read or whatever, are you okay with that, Vanessa?
Well, there's also the signature thing, which.
Oh, okay, sure.
It doesn't. It says superintendent develops measures to ensure compliance with this policy. I'm not sure, I don't understand.
Faximally, yeah, that was kind of a. Is that also like stamping?
Well, that's what I'm.
I mean, faximally used to be an important word for fax, so that's why I was surprised that this was in there.
I was like, what is faximally?
I know, that's what they would say, like, if you're faxing your signature over, and that's why I was so surprised to see this in a, in a new one.
I looked at it.
That's an electronic signature.
I looked at it.
And it's cottonia.
What's fax smile?
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Why, why would it, why would it not say electronic signature, I'm not sure.
Well, I think it's older.
Can we, can we change it?
Yeah, you can say electronic.
Would you like to change it? Did they need electronic? Yeah, okay.
Assuming that's what they meant, I'm not sure.
It's bottom of the first page, under, under the faximally signature paragraph. Uh, we would make it electronic signature.
Okay.
Or the heading and anything like in the, in the sentence here, let's see if there's one, two.
And I'm also not sure what it means, shall, nor shall it be in the custody of the business manager, I don't even know what that means. How do you have a signature in somebody's custody?
Well, that's, especially if it is an electronic one, it, that's.
It's the stamp, it's the, it's the stamp.
Why didn't you offer the answer?
Are they saying that I can't keep this, the superintendent does, because I don't like, some, I could totally like. Switch it or like, break my, or mess with my signature, is that what they're saying?
It's not your signature, it's, it's.
Patty, Patty's really, Patty's really big on this, this school board association, cause there's been a lot of fraud. Because the business manager, well, sign checks over to themselves, or sign checks over to. Family members, all sorts of things, and all they have to do is take that stamper and put the board president's name down.
Right, right.
But if we label electronic, then, but then we'd have to do with electronic or stamped or.
So is faximally a word for?
Cause like, yeah, does it cover?
Here, let me look it up for you.
Yeah.
I had faximally slash electronic when I was writing out the notes of it, cause I thought it would allow, it would give us enough flexibility.
Cause I thought the same thing, I thought, well, then if we can't have the stamp, then.
Faximally is an exact copy or it's written in printed material, so that means it's a copy of the signature.
So it would just be an electronic one then, right?
Or mechanical reproduction of a person's.
Yeah, so the, the little stamper thing is.
Okay.
All right, we gotta put the word faximally back.
Okay, so we're, we're back to, to taking the, so we're, we'll leave it at that though, but then we need to.
So, yeah, that means that you can't, you can't have Wade's signature on your desk.
If he has his, okay, the, the board president is authorized to provide one. This signature shall not be used or shall not be used.
Also, I can't have a stamper anymore, or what?
You can't have Wade's. You can have yours.
You can only have yours if you have one for yours.
So how, how are we working through that, cause I, I do have his, so.
Teresa can have it. He can authorize Teresa to have it, he just.
Or should we, or could we put something in here that, that he can have it, but it's only used for. Maybe get prior approval and for bills or something, I mean, cause I know what he means, it's like.
But that, that's, I mean, I, I totally get the whole thought thing, but it's like, come on, I mean, all I use it for is bills, so.
Here, oh, really? Wade doesn't come in and?
No.
No, I just stamp his name on the checks, but that, that's how he's telling, so, I mean.
That's how she always did it before, true.
They, school board association doesn't necessarily like that, but that's why we also have.
I, I know, but that's how it's, that's how it's.
That's why I initial.
Kenny was always signing.
Kenny was, back in the day, it hasn't been.
That's why, that's why I initial everything.
Well, I, yeah, that maybe should be reconsidered.
Well, we could, how about if we would put some, well, we'd have to do it a separate, well, could we put in this paragraph to say like for bills? If he'd look at them, initial them, and then he could then say, go ahead, stamp my name on them, you know, or something, so he doesn't have to. Sign that say there's a hundred of them, but if he's gone through and initialed them, then say, okay, now you can stamp them.
That was kinda why I was pushing to wait until the bills were approved by the board before he stamps his name on all the checks, cause then there was.
True, cause we'd have.
That's why I was pushing for that, but then we were going five weeks, and you pay all the bills the week after the board meeting, and.
It does get to be, is if he gets one like the day of or the day before.
So that's why I was pushing for that, cause it kind of.
It gets to be so long if you need, yeah.
But at the same time, you save a lot of headache later on for the board.
Money, and you don't want late fees and whatever, right, having to wait so long, so.
But I think Drake Animals does it this way too, like, they just. Stamp it and go, but.
I think there's a reason for that too, signature, and I guess I don't. Not that, not that I'm suggesting that Zana's doing anything, but.
No, yeah.
No, I definitely see, cause there's people that have done it in the past, but, I mean, obviously. Uh, yeah, I can, if we need to do that, obviously, yeah, is it a pain in the butt for me to have to have him come in every time, and then what if he's gone for a week, and then? Yeah, of course it is a pain, but you need to do that, so you guys keep the safety and, and I, I can have him come in every time I do bills.
And then, and not, not have to wait the five weeks that are.
So for example, in other schools I've been in, all the bills are there in a stack, and then the board approves them, and then while the president is around the meeting, signing all these things and passing them over by the. Meeting.
It kinda used to be that way, but it got to be, I think even, I think the second time we moved Kenny back, this last time, I don't think he was signing anymore either. But I know she just had stamps, I guess she had mine and, and, and he's in the past.
And so I.
Because it, it did get to be that some, we were worried about deadlines. But, yeah, but we could maybe make something in here that he could still keep the stamp, but it can only be used after. You know, Wade would come in and, and I guess we do have vice president down too, so if he is gone, you'd have two people, I mean, somebody needs to. Initial and then say, okay, now you can use my stamp.
That's, that's the purpose for having a vice president too, is if the president's not available.
Right, right, that's what I mean, so then we could, we could say that somehow, we could say in here that he could. After president or vice president. Get their authorization. Because still they don't have to carry it around. You know, like, Wade didn't have to carry it around with him, then come in and say, okay, now I've approved these, here's my stamp, now you can stamp them, or.
Well, I mean, what would happen in other districts is you could stamp them the next day, which is why.
But, but right, but I'm just saying as far as if this says he can't have it in his possession, then.
I think this needs to be on the board.
Okay.
This paragraph, yeah, this paragraph, because I wanna make sure they all unders, yeah. Cause I get it, it's nice to have it in his possession, even if we do say he can't use it and play with permission, but otherwise, if he can't even have it in his possession, then Wade has to carry it back and forth. On him each time.
I feel like the business manager assistant can have it, that's why you have it there for the accountability, but.
Yeah, okay, so, okay, so this paragraph. We will. Okay, this is supposed to be money's. We'll ask the board. And we'll highlight that it's this year, so, okay, I'm, I'm good with that. Okay, um, H D V, revenues from school-owned properties.
This is like the CREAL leases. CREAL leases go to the general fund.
Right, yeah, all revenue from to a district shall be deposited into the general fund, definitely, um, all revenue from the lease rental sale equipment should be deposited, yes. Because it's not like anything, even if it's equipment material, that it shouldn't be going into the. Into the capital projects, it shouldn't be going into miscellaneous, those funds are just would be the funds that we get from the taxpayers, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
Revolving accounts.
Yeah, incidental revolving accounts. Do we?
I don't know what this.
Are they talking revolving like credit card, or are they talking actual like an account that we have that is an incidental revolving one? Like, like a line item we meet on our budget, is that what they're talking about?
To me, they're talking about credit cards. There, it allows him to.
Cause that's what I can think of a revolving is usually.
Money in, money out.
Yeah. Because that we have to have.
Otherwise, you have to deal with everything through cash.
But, you know, it, it says revolving individuals are authorized to withdraw funds from the incidental revolving fund, I, I, I don't.
Yeah, this to me is a.
I don't like that word.
I don't know, I don't know what it, I don't know what it.
I, I'm thinking of fund is what, so I'm thinking is like in your actual expenditure report, you know, we have every line, line item is designated, whether it's a. If it's a salary, the insurance, the whatever, the supplies, the whatever, is there one? Which sometimes you would even said is hard, it, it gets an odd thing and, and it doesn't fit any line. So I didn't know if they meant that there, there could be a line.
Well, then I just, in that case, you, you always use miscellaneous, right, but, then, I mean, it's like, a, a fund is like an actual fund of funds, like we have a general fund, and so it's.
Well, yeah.
This would, to me, be like a whole separate bank account, if that's what they're really talking about.
I, I didn't like this wording on this.
Cause it's, it's talking about we can withdraw.
I guess I would like to know what they're talking about, that's from state school association?
Yeah, then it's a recommended, it's not necessarily a member requested, we haven't made it.
H C A B, so, and they said what we had was okay.
And, and it's talking about withdrawing funds, so, this to me is like a whole other bank account kind of situation.
Yeah, and they said it was okay, well, we could do that if you wanna find out from them exactly what the, the timing.
But I don't know what like.
Cause it says okay, what, what we have.
What we, what?
I think a fellow business manager is gonna be able to explain what their revolving account is.
Well, well, we could have him ask that, and if not, then we'll ask school association, what do they consider to be an incidental revolving, here it says account, here it says fund. Okay?
No, I don't know, I, yeah.
I mean, you can ask to see like.
What are we gonna use this for in theory that we can't already do?
Well, this, this policy was adopted in two thousand ten, and here we are not knowing what it was adopted for, so I'm wondering. I don't know.
Well, let's, let's have him, let's see if, between Zane and Robbie, if they can find out some more about this one, and then that maybe form a word by the media, so check on. Meaning and wording.
Stated as an audit, the net goal, sorry.
Yeah, no, you're okay, the next one is, yes, audit.
Just states that we will appoint, we will hire an independent auditor who shall be a certified public accountant and conduct an audit.
Wait.
In accordance with law.
And I don't, so I don't, here's what confuses me about this whole policy thing. This is just saying that we have to do what law says, and if they, they say we're supposed to not even have the policies that says what our graduation requirements are.
But we have to have, yeah, cottonias recommending this one, that, that we have, and I think maybe. I mean, we've had this one around for a long time, but also we have heard stories in the last few years, how, I don't know how in the world some of these schools are not doing a manual audit.
Well, right.
So.
So the board is managing and advising the business manager. They're not advising the principals and all those different things, so that's why there's a separation here, so you're putting out an edict to your business manager that. You, it is expected that they will conduct an audit, and if they don't conduct an audit, it is a violation of your operating procedures as a board.
So, my other question is, it says the board will appoint an independent auditor. I thought we could only use the one we use, we've never appointed one, we've just used the one we always use.
I, I think unless we would point somebody differently, I think otherwise it just kinda just carries over, cause.
I thought they somewhere had to though.
There's only, I think, two in the state that can even do it, so I guess that's, I think years ago, that's why we went with Brady Martz, and we just have stayed with them, because. I, I, the only reason I kinda, kinda know that is that laundry, we were trying to find somebody that was cheaper instead of charging us so much here from Brady Martz. And there was only one of them would do it, and at that time they just said no, they were taking very few, and they didn't wanna do anymore, so we had no choice and stayed with Brady Martz, but.
Okay, so that is something that could be checked into periodically if.
We probably could, just to see if somebody, yeah. Luckily, I think after this last, I think now this current year, we won't have to have that extra one done, because, you know, we had to have a second. Called a single audit, because we got more over a certain threshold dollar amount, that was always Esther money, but now that we use it up all last year, she'd said that we won't have to. That won't have to be done for this current school year now, so we'll save a few thousand dollars compared to the last couple of years. I hit a lot of schools, that was a state thing, that they required to have an extra audit. I'm okay with this one, I guess, from whatever, I mean, this needs to be, okay, I, buildings and grounds management. Okay, IA buildings and grounds management. Last one, a member requested one from two thousand ten. He said it was okay, but I think the biggest thing here is just that we have to actually have our buildings and grounds from here. Whatever, actually help with getting a. What do you wanna call it, a facility?
Yeah.
Procedure, not only procedure, but facility. I can't think of what it's.
So we're.
Plan going forward, yeah.
We're supposed to have an annual tour.
Yeah, I seen that, I thought, hey, I'd like that.
I think we should actually, I think we should go after that.
Right, yeah. I'm okay with it, but yeah, let's, um, let's talk about that there then too, we'll, we'll kinda tell the guys up there that. We should, you know, that's something that we should plan for once a year. Okay, um, IA AS bestest management. And they do that every year, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's the bills that come through from like, with this.
Right, they, they walk them, yeah.
The core of something maybe?
I can't remember, but I do remember hearing the report.
Badlands, Badlands environment.
Yeah, yeah, there we go. Yeah, so I'm okay on that because it was good that, that they keep an eye on that. Um, IAAB energy conserva- conservation.
Um, this one I got a problem with, I, this is weird. I seriously, you're telling me that the students are supposed to.
Yeah.
Be helping us with, I mean, not that I have a problem with the students coming with something, but part of the curriculum?
Yeah.
Honestly, I don't.
This one was a member requested too, so, and that was from two thousand ten, so.
I'd be okay with ditching this policy, but.
I'm okay with it too, I mean, do you see any problem with it, Robbie? I don't.
No, we can ditch it.
Yeah, okay, good, got rid of one.
Indoor air policy.
So this one didn't pass through, so.
Dyes.
Yeah, dyes, and there we go, the word to say, dyes. Okay, there we go. IAAC is indoor air quality. We do have, they come and check that.
Yes, they check this.
So I'm okay with, with being checked and we know where it's at.
Periodic and they, if it fails, they let us know.
Right.
And that's part of.
It doesn't say it has to be done annually or anything, so.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so it's okay, just that, yeah, we do it periodically. Um, IAB buildings and ground security plan. Uh, yeah. We actually have, um, I mean, I know the keys are locked up and all those things and, and we do have signs. Little signed things for each student if they're using the rooms and things back there or facility use agreements and things or whatever, um, but I don't.
We have it, it's like twenty-five years old.
Right, it's.
Needs to be updated and I think the.
Yeah.
I think the, most of the community carers would really like to partner with us to help us develop this further. Cause they know it's twenty-five years old, but.
What's twenty-five years old?
The plan, the buildings and ground security plan. And I think that.
Like I said, I think, you know, we're doing some of these things kinda pieceman with facility use agreements and things. And yeah, controller keys, but I don't know if we actually have a, a good formal plan to go along with it.
I think somebody told me, and I think it's in the principal's office, but. The names of the people who are supposed to do what roles in the security plan, I don't think there's anybody still on staff who actually. Is, cause they wrote names in the plan.
So maybe this is something.
Mrs. Keller might leave some kids out to this door and, you know, may go to this building and. Like nobody really knows who, so we gotta keep reassessing it and talking.
Well, then, you know, here like. Um, procedures recorded serial numbers and, you know, for some of our high priority, like some of the higher, you know, inventory things and things too. I know about one time we did purchase and did something where we put barcodes on things, but I know a lot of times things would get zoned out or added. She had no knowledge of it, so we stopped using it and.
Oh, then it's not being used?
No, it doesn't use it if you, because people would, they would throw things away and not tell her. And then they buy things, you know, so, yeah, that's even by the wayside or whatever too, so. Maybe that's something that, I don't know, we wanna start it now, or it's kinda hard with all the things to be done in the next two months or something.
I think the next superintendent is, it was one of the things on my market.
This would be something that we could do as a board and a superintendent, I think it's a principal input and things too. But some things I could see would be, you know, like the office, would it be the ones that could tell us, well, what do you wanna do? Or what do you think is good for control of keys and, you know, after our access, you know, our principals could give us some good suggestions. I think it's something that we could be a good thing that we do to get, to do together and come up with a refreshed plan, if it's that.
And this would be part of a strategic plan.
Right, so maybe we just keep this one for now, but make note that say that this is kinda be one of the things that we need to start working on in the fall.
Well, and if our security plan makes us so that we need to change the policy.
Right, then we could do it at that time, yeah.
Because gosh, if we, I mean, we spent a little bit of money on that inventory system. And then if we're, we just quit using it, then.
Right, yeah, yeah, because then she would find things that would be, you know, oh, she went, looked for something one day, it's like, oh, it's gone, it was thrown away last year. You know, or something, so, yeah. So I, I, I'm, I'm thinking that for now, let's just keep, but say that, hey, this is something. We gotta work on a, a security, grounds and security plan this fall. And then, yes, this could be changed in accordance with, but as to how we write it up, so make an occasion to them to let them know. So it's gonna be, needs to be, needs to be updated. Okay, um, IED disposal of school real estate.
Oh.
What about IDB, what's his other?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I did, I. Yeah, we'll do that, I'm sorry, I had my, IDB. Yeah, uh, risk management, we'll do that one next.
Did we skip IED?
Yeah, we're gonna do it, cause it was on here twice, we'll put it down here where we, it falls along with the, um.
Oh, yeah, okay, I see.
With the agenda. It was on there twice, one that we had it long, so yeah, we'll put it down here. Okay, so. Insurance coverage compliance, I mean, that is something that.
Yeah, that insurance policy.
Right, yes, and it, and they come around, I, I'm sure, I would think.
We have many every year.
Because I know they, he always did, even just on, on laundry side, I mean, so I would certainly hope they're doing that for a school.
We have that, I'll take care of it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we're okay on that one and bus safety, IEAA.
Not, not skip IED.
Yeah, no, we skip those for school real estate.
Oh, she's, okay, see, I moved it to the, okay, then we're gonna do IED, sorry, we got to, okay, disposal of school real estate. Okay, board of directors. Um, yeah, I think I had looked at this or whatever in the days. Which I think we are doing now, cause like we sold a bus or something one time, we didn't, but now I know, you know. Seems like now we are, or, I think that last time we put something out for, for people to send us bids as to what they wanted, was it an old bus or something?
Well, yeah, we, I think it was under five hundred dollars, that was like three hundred dollars.
Yes, it was, that was.
And I think there's something somewhere that is under five hundred dollars, state law dictates you don't have.
Yeah, I think Mike said something like that, yeah, but I mean, if there was anything more than that, then we know down the process is that, yes. We would have, people would have to submit bids as to what they would wanna.
Yeah, if it goes over five hundred dollars, this, by state law, this only applies to things that go over five hundred dollars.
Right.
So you sold a van for five hundred dollars and we sold a junk bus for two hundred.
Right.
Actually, I think that this policy, no. Wouldn't indicate that. Unless.
Real estate, so it's probably more so.
Falls under.
Cause I know there's another one, this is real estate and there's another one that's, uh, is like. Equipment or I forget what that one is actually called, there's another one I think for that. This one is like this, this one's more so like real estate, like property, like if we were going to someday. Sell this lot back here behind the building or something like that, and I think, and that's what we would definitely advertise for bids, so. I'm, I'm okay with that. Cause this is all about real property, so, cause there, there's another one. That's about equipment or whatever, cause I know, um. That was, I think, there was a question on that earlier this year or whatever, somebody had asked about buying something and I think we had, you had to. You and Wade or somebody had to contact the lawyer and how it was to sell something, even if it was just like a computer or anything.
Yes, yes, there is a, there is a staff, staff property kind of policy.
Right, yeah. So for this one, for real estate, yes, I agree, it needs to be advertised for this.
This computer is over five hundred dollars in value, so therefore to get rid of this computer, you can't give this computer away.
Right, well, I think even that, I don't know if it was any price, if it was something, no matter if you think it's only worth whatever that. If there's someplace, anything in our district that somebody could use it, it had to.
Yes.
Yeah, it has to stay, you can't just. Uh, we found, cause I remember Wade said he, he had a question on that and then he had to ask and. It's like when we were just letting kids like, okay, if you wanna buy a computer when you graduate, you could buy it for twenty-five dollars and she said, oh my gosh, absolutely not. If it's something that anybody else can use, it's still in working condition, it needs to stay in the district, staff laptops, anything. And if it wasn't, if they weren't gonna use it, as long as it isn't junk, that it's absolutely totally broken, that you have to throw it out. Then you have to, no matter what it was, you had to put it out for bids that if somebody would want to.
So what happens with the old computers?
They get, they get sent, they get sent to like Seattle now, that's changed in my mind because.
Yeah.
There's like recycling centers.
Yeah, only if they're absolutely where they can't be used, like if they're broken, then they have to, they can be destroyed or whatever, but.
So they can be sent to a recycling center, but they can't be given to the kid who used it.
Because if they're in working condition, if they can be used in the district, then they should be used in the district. And if you deem them not to, then you have to settle them.
Basically.
But if they're broken, actually broken, that's when you can send them, but they have to be actually broken. That's what I, I think, what I understood.
Well, cause you're technically defrauding the taxpayers if you pay enough, I mean, there's a chance for fraud there. Cause you're sending, so you're buying new lap Chromebooks and then you pass them on to somebody else who wants them. Value and then that person then goes.
Value.
That person then goes and sells them for what, you know, you should've sold them for. Um, so that it, it limits the fraud opportunities.
Yeah, but anyway, that was a different one, but yeah, anyway, with the real estate, I'm fine, cause I do want it that it has to be put on bids and everything else or whatever, so. Okay, now we're down to bus safety. Right, and I think they are inspected every year, correct? I remember Brian, Brian always talked about that.
We have been so lucky because for thirty years, we have had a certified inspector on staff.
Right.
Um, and that is the first for me, I've never been on a place where you have a certified inspector on staff. Most of the time you have to drive them somewhere, or we would have to drive ours all the way to Pier when we were in South Dakota. This is something we will have to do in the future as well.
That's definitely one of the sponsors, so.
Will poss, can sponsors do that?
Oh, they do for some, I don't remember why they can't for buses.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a difference.
I don't know.
Yeah, we'll find out, or whatever.
Cause we had to drive all the way to some bus place in here, but it's old muscles, we couldn't go to like.
I remember, so.
A semi place.
I'm hoping that C C still, but yeah, I think we can, but anyway, otherwise I'm fine, cause I do, I, I do like that they do, they need to be inspected every year and I'm, I'm okay with that, so. It's like that way, so I'm okay with this one. Okay.
Thank you for meeting.
Yes, yeah, we done ten forty-one.
Let's keep, Vanessa, this'll give me some things to do before the next meeting, I appreciate it.
And then we had a couple that he said he was still waiting to hear back on, there was a couple of those that we pulled out that night too, so we'll have these and then. I think there was two of them we pulled out and then Kelly has to give us that reading for the other one, cause I think I pulled out three.
So why is the, are none of these on the, or, why is there not a board policy on the website yet?
Cause we just sent it to school board, we just, I mean, we're literally creating that, like.
When she's all done, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to have all these changed and corrected ones so that we can actually have one.
Yeah.
I mean, on the website though.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm creating the link and we've done the action to allow me to do that.
I mean, cause that would, it would be nice that once we finally get, cause we've gone through so many now in the last two.